Okay, shall we get started? Good morning, it's still almost morning. My name's Debbie Young. I'm the Chair of the Washington Transportation Commission. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit murky this morning. The lighting isn't great in this corner. But, welcome to the Root Jurisdiction Study Meeting. Thank you so much for taking time to be here. We're really happy to have your feedback and it's very valuable to us. A small group of us on a subcommittee have been working with Paula and her team on this study and trying to take a little bit of the murk and gloom out of the process, for those of you that have been through it before. And I think you'll be really interested to see the results that they've come up with and are gonna preview for you today. So, thanks for being here and I'll just hand it over to Paula.
Great, thank you so much. And I see several other, I see Commissioner Baldwin is also with us. We have some transportation commissioners on as well. Thank you again for being here. Next slide please. I'm just gonna give a bit of background on, on the project and I'll be turning it over. I'll be turning it over to Rob Fellows and Steve Gorchester, the consultants, after that. So, we've split the presentation into three sections to allow for discussion at key points. So, you know, feel free to hold your questions for those sections or you can also type your comments and questions into the chat. And we'll address all the questions either today or as follow-up. So, we'll be talking about the project's status and the research and preliminary findings today. And as next steps, we'll be reaching out, doing some tribal outreach in the spring. And then in May, we'll be going back to the Transportation Commission for their approval and hope to submit a final report to the Legislature in June timeframe. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide please. Thanks. So, with that, a bit about route transfers, just the basics. State routes are defined in law, in state law, as you know. And the route transfer process is used to add or delete a route segment to the state system. And the Commission is the administrator of this process. They evaluate the transfer requests that may come in from WashDOT, cities, counties, against that current criteria that's in statute. And, and if recommended, they pass it onto the Legislature to consider the change. And for, similarly but separately, WashDOT executes a transfer that they take control of when they're turning a state route back to a city or county. And so far to date, in the history of this program and this process, there have been a net of 10 miles transferred to cities. So, through 16 transfer requests over time, since 1991, the total outcome is 10 miles going back to cities. Next slide. This is just a bit of history on, on the evolution of the state highway system, starting in 37 with the State Highways Act. And from 55 to 84, the Transportation Commission certified any transfer or abandonment. And then in 1984, the Department of Transportation took on this authority. And just shortly after, in 91, the Route Jurisdiction Transfer Process was established and has been in place since. Next slide. A quick overview of the roles and just to distinguish and make it clear. The state routes are listed, again, as I mentioned, in statute and the Legislature's role is to amend that. And they also authorized WashDOT to build any new alignments or bypasses and provide that funding. And then the Commission receives these requests, as I mentioned, from DOT or local agencies and they go through this transfer process and provide recommendations to the Legislature. And WashDOT has that authority to abandon or turn back to local agencies state routes that no longer need, that are, that they determine are no longer needed to connect the state highway system. And I'll talk about that in a minute. So, this is kind of an important slide as we have reviewed the processes, just distinguishing roles. The Route Jurisdiction Transfer Process is used whenever a route transfer would require changing the description of that state highway in statute. So, if, if a small part of that description has to be adjusted, the route transfer process comes into play. Otherwise, WashDOT administers their process that would realign the route if it remains consistent with the current statute. And once the implementation, or to implement the Route Jurisdiction Transfer, when the Commission, when the Commission's effort kicks in, then WashDOT uses its authorities to make those changes. Next slide please and just go on to the next. So, a quick overview of the study, exactly what's in Proviso is here. So, you can see, this is a direction we received from the Legislature, determine if changes are needed in jurisdictional assignment between state, county, and city road systems. We'll talk about that today. Review current criteria used to define the state highway system to determine whether changes are appropriate and submit our report by July 1st, 2025 to the Transportation Committees of the Legislature. Next slide. So, where we're at in that is that we've gone through the, over the course of the last year, we've gone through the history and context, a legal and policy review. We've done an outreach and engagement plan that this meeting is a part of. We have reviewed the process and evaluation of route transfers. We've looked at the state route system as it is today and we've produced some preliminary findings we're sharing with you before we produce the final report. So, we welcome your feedback. And last slide for me is just the overview of our research. We are looking for opportunities to clarify, streamline, and bring greater efficiency to the transfer process. I would add, also making it transparent and data-driven. So that, you know, everybody knows how it works regardless of what jurisdiction, wherever you sit. And we understand how disagreements would be handled. So, when a transfer is requested and not all parties agree, we know how that will, will work. And there's a clear process for that. And we've also, again, that data-driven analysis. We have some ideas about how to remove some of the ambiguous terms that we are dealing with when, when we look at the description of the highway system. So, that is what Steve and Rob are gonna talk about. And with that, I'll hand it off to Rob Fellows. Thank you, Rob.
All right, thank you. Can I have the next slide, please? So, I'm gonna walk through the existing process and then some proposed changes that we're, we're proposing to the process. And then I'm gonna hand it over to Steve to talk through the evaluation process. So, just to reinforce what Paula said, what we're trying to do with this process is reach a recommendation to the Legislature on whether to add or, or delete a segment of the state route system by transferring a route between local and state government. And the current process begins with a request from either the state or a local government. That request triggers an analysis step that's undertaken by the Transportation Improvement Board staff. They evaluate whether or not the proposed transfer is consistent with criteria that's established in law. And the criteria is basically about what, what should be a state route. That's what the criteria is about. And that analysis comes back to the Commission. They make a preliminary finding on whether it makes sense. And if there is, if it's recommended to continue, the Commission conducts a public outreach process. They contact stakeholders, property owners, you know, other people that might be concerned about the transfer. And then, they may have a hearing if it's controversial. And then there's a final finding. And if the finding is recommended, the Commission submits the recommendation to the Legislature for action. And that's supposed to happen on an annual basis. And then the, the Legislature writes a proposed change to the statute. Next slide please. So, what we heard from early in the process, we, we talked with the agencies and associations, the Association of Cities and Counties, WashDOT, TIB, CRAB, and others to, to get feedback about how this process works, how the criteria work. And the challenges that people identified, the criteria for state routes that's in law, has some ambiguous terms that are hard to, to interpret when it comes time to actually using them to make a recommendation. The analysis doesn't address a lot of the things that potential transfer parties are concerned about, such as who's gonna pay for the, the route once it's transferred, who's gonna pay for what, who's gonna conduct what implementation responsibilities and that sort of thing. And that the process doesn't encourage problem solving. It's, it's just sort of put it in the hopper and then get the analysis and go out. And then if there's challenges at the end or things that need to be talked out, that happens after that process. So, some of the opportunities we've identified, holding an initial meeting, improving the analysis information and terms, streamlining, clarifying, simplifying the process, and ensuring consistent application of the RJT and WashDOT administrative processes, when using the right process at the right time. We're gonna walk through each of these in the next couple of slides. So, the first thing we're proposing is that there should be a pre-request conference between the transfer parties. And the first question is, is this the right process? Does the, does the request involve a change to the state highway definition in statute? Remember, the statute basically defines the route and the places it should connect. And if, and if it doesn't require that, if it's just connecting those two places or those, those places on a different roadway, it can be realigned using WashDOT's administrative process. Then, the next question is, what problem does the request aim to solve and is the transfer the best way to address it? So, there's some dialogue that needs to happen. And then the final question is, what do the parties concur and what are the areas of concern? And let's make sure that the process to evaluate addresses those areas of non-concurrents. Next slide please. So, the two things, there's two different situations where the transfer parties disagree that we're proposing to address. And the first is, if they disagree about costs and transfer conditions, you know, who's gonna take care of that bridge or, or, you know, who has the best capacity to take the maintenance on of a roadway? Or those sorts of things. That's really not what the Commission's been charged with evaluating in their criteria. And that needs, usually that, the negotiation about those things occurs after this process goes through. And so that the disagreement, the non-concurrents continues all the way through the process and isn't addressed. And so, we're recommending that the Commission is able to send the parties off to have a negotiation outside of the Commission process, but concurrently to the Commission process, to try to find agreement on those issues. And come back to the Commission. Then, if there's agreement, that's great. If there's not agreement, the Commission's gonna have to decide whether, whether to continue. If there's an appropriation needed or some other resources that need to be brought to make it a feasible transfer, it's important to know that at, at the point where it's transferred, where the decision's made and, and the recommendation's sent to the Legislature. The second case is, if the parties disagree about whether the transfer supports state route objectives. That's, that's, that's what the analysis is supposed to address. And all we're recommending in this case is that if there's areas of disagreement about that that aren't addressed by the process we're recommending, then, then the scope can be added to address those, those issues. So, every transfer is different. There's idiosyncrasies in each. And that if there's something specific that needs to be analyzed, but whether, whether the transfer makes sense from a state route perspective, we're basically trying to give everybody permission to ask the right questions and to answer them in the analysis. Next slide please. So, the next step after that is the improved analysis. And that's what Steve's gonna address after we stop and take a couple of questions from you, if you have any. And I think, I, I think Nicole's gonna...
I, I am. We only have the one question and actually, it looks like Mark has, has another question. Mark, do you just wanna go ahead and come off mute and, and make a comment? Or do you just wanna leave that in the chat?
Yes, it's, it's just a comment, not a question. Rob said that, what should be a state highway? Well, the criteria say what should be a state highway or what may be a state highway.
Right. Right, both those terms, both those terms are used in the criteria in, in, some of them are should and some of them are may. Yes.
That's my only comment. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Mark. And it looks like we don't have anyone else's hands raised or any other comments in the chat at this point. So, if anyone else wants to ask a question, otherwise, we can save that time for the end and, and hopefully have a little bit more input to add more time for responses. Hearing none, I think we'll hand it over to Steve.
Thank you. Good morning. So, we're gonna talk about the analysis methodology, which is the, kind of the primary body of work that's been done in the last year. And as you've heard, we've done that work because the current criteria include a lot of poorly-defined terms and they don't support a yes or no decision. It isn't that the yes or no decision is always that obvious because most transfers are in the middle of the system. You know, nobody transfers the obvious state routes or the obvious local streets. It's always the stuff in the middle and the stuff in the middle tends to look a lot alike. A minor arterial in the state system can look a lot and function a lot alike a minor arterial on the city or county system. So, the, the real issue with yes or no decisions is the current criteria appear to be binary in that any individual criteria pointing in one direction or the other could result in a decision. However, the criteria with their ambiguous terms tend to point both ways. In other words, you can interpret it as, this is, this answer is yes, therefore it's a state route. Or this answer is yes, therefore it's a local road. And that's a problem. And it's a problem that tends not to matter when we agree. So, if people agreed for the, in the transfer and the criteria point both directions, doesn't matter. But if people disagree, then the fact that the criteria can point in both directions becomes the debate. And interestingly, it's usually not what the debate's even about. The debate is almost always about who's going to bear the cost of this route and who's going to make decisions about the operation and development of the route. So, because of that, it makes sense to amend the law to provide more clear criteria. And in fact, our proposal is to provide a broader footprint of a criteria that is more based on metrics about the operation of the system. So, to do that, we've evaluated criteria indicators for the entire state highway system. There are 180 current routes. And if you look at the current routes, the theory was that you could tell what should be part of that system. And in fact, the data worked out pretty well in terms of, you know, an obvious state route performs really highly against the indicators. And a, a, a state route that's an either-or tends to perform in the middle and routes that clearly shouldn't be part of the system don't register. And that's kind of what we're looking for. And, and so, let's go on to the next slide. So, as I said, the current law has ambiguous terms. You can see some of them in bold. And, you know, one of the ambiguous terms that provides sort of the most debate is the, the term concerning regionally-oriented traffic. We also have a lot of issues with geographic, geographic areas, like what's a population center? What's, what is really rural? What's really urban? And let's go on to the next slide. Do we have another one that's got regional? So, this, in the second bullet there, the, this is one of the debates that always comes up. What is regionally-oriented through traffic? You know, one of the things we know is that if you're looking at a major arterial that's a city street or a major arterial that's a state highway today, they both have some regionally-oriented through traffic. And it is one of the characteristics that makes a major arterial major. This criteria tells you nothing about how much is significant. And as a result, we end up having a lot of discussions and attempts to evaluate. And in the end, regionally-oriented traffic isn't particularly helpful in, in, in making any kind of decision about what should be state or local. You could use it to argue either point. Next slide please. So, what we have done is built a new metrics-based criteria set around what we found to be the primary intensive of the state highway system, which had been previously expressed in statewide plans and seemed to be pretty consistent with what the Legislature intended in the original drafting of 4717 RCW. And they collectively roll up to connectivity, which is the connection of places to the system. Function, which is the operational characteristics of the system and its designations, things like whether it's a freight route or, or a national highway system or highway of statewide significance. If it's a scenic byway and then it's volume. And then continuity is the connection of the system between itself. So, what routes does the system connect to? And this is all based generally on the theory that the state system should be continuous and concise. It should be highly connected because it's used, for example, for freight as a wayfinding tool. Freight and visitors use it as a wayfinding tool. And also because there's a need in the state system to maintain continuity of operations, signs, condition, things like that. So, all of these metrics were the, the data that was collected from the 180 state highway systems. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the specific ones. Many of these are in the criteria today. We, we didn't find that the things that the, the original legislative bill considered were wrong at all. I mean, most of them are pretty good. We did find a few things missing. And we also found that the way they're evaluated today is the part that's not really helpful and the part that's most debatable. So, let's go to the next slide. This is an example of where the current criteria did not include a factor that we found to be important. And that is the connectivity of tribal seats of government. The current criteria say that the state highway system should connect to all county seats. But these tribal seats of government often provide like services or even more services to the population of the state and should also be part of the system. A great example, the one that I always kind of point to is Highway 155, which is up in the northeast corner of the state on the Colville Reservation. And that's that large kind of area of color there, purple or pink, whatever that is. And you can see a red dot on Highway 155. Now, the reason this is important is because we found with a lot of these low-volume roads that the criteria don't really suggest they're part of the state system. And, you know, you have to consider whether a, a route like 155 makes the kind of connections that are necessary to be a state highway. And where it does is connecting Nispelum, the town of Nispelum, to the state system because it is the state's business to ensure that these activity centers have continuous access. And, and that's why we found that tribal seats of government should be considered just like the county seats already were. Next slide please. And here's another place where the criteria, you know, when you evaluate the operating characteristics of a lot of low-volume roads in areas of agricultural production, they also look like they could go either way. They could be state highways or county roads. We found a need for the state to maintain state, the state highway system for the purposes of transporting agricultural goods because they are so important to the state. And maintaining state highway access to agricultural production zones became an evaluation factor for that reason. We had to do original research about this. There really was nothing that provided any kind of indicator. So, we built an indicator based on spatial analysis of the routes that have agricultural production in close proximity to them. And that became one of our evaluation factors that gets baked into the analysis today. Next slide. I mentioned earlier that we had this kind of a challenge with the population centers criteria that exists now because it says incorporated places and then it also says places with 1,000 population. But it doesn't say how big the geographical area of 1,000 population should be. So, if you want there to be 1,000 population, you just consider the area to be bigger and bigger. It didn't really lend itself to any kind of orderly interpretation. So, you know, you end up debating it again and we're trying to be on each other's side in this analysis rather than have these adversarial cases where we're debating facts that really aren't even the facts that we care about. So, fortunately, we found that there are already designations of areas with 1,000 population that are official designations called census-designated places. And the census-designated places are, already have geographic polygons around them. So, we have incorporated them into the evaluation factors as well. Next slide please. To do this evaluation, we built a spreadsheet tool that pulls in all of that data from 180 state highways and then ranks each of the evaluation factors according to high-low, high-medium, and low rubric that in turn was based on kind of the histograms of how that data cast where, where the data was voluminous. We identified it as high and where the data showed little affinity to the criteria, it was designated as low. And we have built a tool that allows us to enter the information associated with the segments of the route that are considered for transfer and even the neck, the neighboring segments that might not be considered for transfer and evaluate the criteria based on all of those 180 state highways and the characteristics that they have. So, if you have high connectivity, high function, and high continuity, it points to state highway, should be on the system or should be retained on the system. If you have all low indicators, it points to local road, should be on the, should be off the system or should not be added to the system. And the purpose of this is to give the Commission... And the purpose of this is to give the commission a little bit broader indication. Of whether the route that's being considered or the segment that's being considered for inclusion or deletion from the system. Operates like the rest of the state highway system on the basis of connectivity, continuity and function. And this evaluation tool is what replaces the study. That's currently done on those binary criteria that don't tell us much of anything. And the people who do those studies, commission staff and tip staff. With the input of county staff or crab staff. Will continue to do this sort of analysis in the future instead of. The the study that's done on the current criteria. Next slide, please. We want the commission to decide. Is this segment or route appropriate to the state highway system or appropriate to the local system? On the one hand, but then there are also some some policy factors that need to come into play or at least be considered. They they're not necessarily conclusive, but you have to kind of reveal to. The people who ultimately make this decision, the the legislature. Whether the route is environmentally sensitive. And if it is environmentally sensitive, in other words, is subject to washout, flood. Landslide that you need to make a decision who is best to ensure the continuity and the continued operation or the repair. Of that route. Is it the state or in some cases is it the local? Equity comes into play because we want. Decisions about whether the route should be local or state be made in the interest of the population. So what happens here is the question is asked about whether we have vulnerable communities. Who would be taking on something they can't maintain? Or would be needing to take a a route or. Because of the need to develop it in the interest of the local community. Soul connections came into play because there are some parts of the state system. That link to places that look like they need to be connected to the system. Maybe it's a city over one thousand population. But it's not on a continuous state highway route, so it doesn't evaluate very well. But if it's a sole connection, then it should be on the system, added to the system or maintained as a state highway. This continuities is an evaluation that seeks to avoid transfers that create gaps in the system. We've said that the system should be continuous and concise. If you're transferring segments that then break the system apart. We think that has some negative impacts that need to be considered. Particularly if you have. You know, visitors or or freight operators that are trying to follow the state highway system to a destination. And the signs just disappear. That's not considered particularly favorable. And then duplication requires the conducting of an analysis to determine whether. Route in a common kind of. Location connecting to similar origins and destinations, both need to be on the system or not. And sometimes they do, there are cases where one route is the interstate route and the other route is providing access to a port. And that would be a case where maybe duplication was appropriate. And we can go to the next slide, which I think is the questions.
So I will go ahead and and just looking at the chat to make sure that we're addressing everything that's already been been posted. Is we had a question towards the beginning of when you started talking Steve, so that may have been part of Rob's. Is if the two parties cannot come to an agreement about costs to maintain after transfer. Does the commission end the process at that point?
No, the commission doesn't end the process at that point because that would be veto authority. The commission still has to complete. The the test of should this be a state highway or a local road based on the evaluation factors? And also apply the policy considerations. Now. Whether ultimately that produces a a case that the legislature has to consider. That's being argued based on cost. You know, isn't known, but you you wouldn't have either party sort of. Just being able to say, well, I don't want it, therefore it shouldn't be. That is ultimately the commission and the legislature's purview.
Let me just add though, I I think that there's a strong. Interest on all parties, from all parties to find agreement. Before making a transfer. So. There's a pushback there. And I don't think it's possible to say what you would do in every. Every case, I think you'd have to look at the circumstances. If there's an appropriation that needs to be done to make this a good transfer, you'd want to communicate that. If you're close to agreement haven't but haven't gotten there yet, you might want to delay the decision. If you feel like you've reached the end of the line. Trying to talk out the differences, then maybe the commission needs to act, but I think you need to look at each of these cases. Independently because there's going to be different factors in play.
Thanks, Rob. That's a good point. It is a dynamic process. My point is that the individual parties don't control the dynamic process that ultimately the commission does.
And then we do have a comment and so and thank you, Paula, for having already provided a response. I'm going to go ahead and skip over that one first. Because we do have two direct questions that I think we could address pretty quickly. Is one person is asking if can we include SR four oh nine on the map? And I think that's probably an adjustment we can make. Okay, we'll go ahead and take care of that. And then the second question is, when was the data layer pulled? There was a December update to the population center layer with Wash Dot. So curious if that was in play.
We pulled the data actually. For this, for the broader analysis to which we use to develop this whole tool. We pulled the data, I think last summer, so. And it's not segment level data, it's whole routes. In that in that tool that we've got. So when you do a specific transfer. You need to pull the current data for the segments that are under consideration. And that would be something that we've tried to keep it simple so that it can be done by. Without a huge effort from existing sources. Most of this information is is in Wash Dot databases. Or can be pretty easily pulled together from from the Wash Up databases.
Great. And another question that just popped in is how much weight does the financial capacity of a county to take on the obligations of a rail? Of a route, excuse me, or a route have in the decision to transfer a road from state to county?
Maybe I'll give a quick stab at that. That's not part of the commission's criteria. So if they're going through the process. In law. Cost isn't addressed, cost responsibility, so which is one of the reasons that we. We've recommended that that negotiation needs to occur. Directly between the parties concurrently to the process.
And then another question, how are agricultural areas defined?
You do want to do that or?
I I'm aware of how it's defined, but I didn't do the analysis. So Kurt, do you have? I know it was the proximity of agricultural production zones within a quarter mile of the route.
I think we used a mile radius, but we used a statewide land use layer that had an agricultural category. And then we calculated the percentage of land within a one mile buffer of every route that. Was in that agricultural category.
Perfect. And I am going to go ahead and play that part of the facilitator who says we need to keep moving. So I am going to go ahead and ask us to get onto that last section. And we do have that one comment that we hadn't talked about, but we can come back to that if we have time at the end. Otherwise, we can address it after the meeting.
Okay, next slide, please. So this first slide addresses the question that the legislature asked us about to determine whether changes are needed in jurisdictional alignment. Between state, county and city road systems. Our analysis suggests that there's no urgency for making wholesale transfers. There isn't a lot of desire to do that. We actually heard concern from a lot of parties about any effort to. To do a wholesale reevaluation. So we're not recommending that. That that occur. So once the current commission enacted transfer moratorium is lifted in twenty twenty six, so next year after. After the legislature gets this report and and gets some feedback to it, transfer requests can be made as needed. Likely under the improved process. Next slide, please. So one finding that we're recommending is that the criteria for defining state highways should be clarified and and. That some of the detail probably should be moved to the rulemaking process rather than being in statute and that the revised statute. Should include high level principles for state routes. It's obviously that the federal interstate and numbered routes are state routes because. But also that other state routes should exhibit strong connectivity, continuity and functional characteristics. And also we think that the statute should address some of the policy and network factors Steve talked to. That the commission should consider in their assessment. There is language in the current criteria that really is not specific to the Rob jurisdiction process. It basically says. If there's a choice to connect two places using different routes, here's the different things you should look at. We think that's valuable, but it's not. Necessarily RJT specific and probably should be moved to a different statute. Next slide, please. And then. Really, the next step for all of this would be for all the parties involved to. Talk out the different roles and protocols that need to be done. Wash the commission would need to update. The the rules, some of the things that are defining the the evaluation and the steps that. That parties to the to a transfer process need to be to follow. That should be written in rules and the statute needs to be updated to incorporate the process and valuation improvements. The commission, TIB and Crab are going to need to agree, I think, on evaluation process roles. Who's who keeps the data, who maintains and updates in in that sort of thing. Wash Dot and the commission are going to need to agree on protocol for coordinating all transfer requests. So that's the RJT transfers. But also the administrative transfers that Wash Dot can do independently if there's no if there's no change needed to to the statute. And the proposal would be to use the pre pre request conference as a starting point for all transfers. And that makes sure that there's communication and discussion about and some triage about whether the right process is being used. Notify, report back on transfers as they progress back and forth. And document and record all transfers in a central location. Next slide, please. So that's the end of our. Preliminary findings and the opportunity to to give us some feedback.
So we don't have any other questions in the chat right now, so I did want to kind of revisit this comment that was made earlier. And Mark, just make sure that what Paula already responded. Addresses what the point that you are making is there was a point about border crossings. Or connection with state highways in bordering states to which Paula provided a response. So I just want to make sure that Mark, you believe that was everything has been addressed appropriately?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Great. And so and folks can check out the chat for Paula's response to that rather than me just just reading it verbatim. So if anyone else has any questions, feel free to unmute yourselves or put it in the chat or raise your hand. Any of the above and we can take it from there. See, this is a quiet group. We talked about the sunshine outside. Okay, it looks like Jacob Walker has his hand raised.
Thank you guys for for doing this. This is super helpful. It seems like one of those. Things that we all probably wish could have happened a decade or more ago. So thank you for putting in the work on it. Just out of curiosity, what were the, I think earlier was said there was like six or seven of these that actually have gone through or maybe less? What were those situations like?
Steve, you have the most knowledge on this one. Do you want to? Talk to that?
You know, the legislature, the joint transportation committee of the legislature asked a question kind of similar to this. And you know, one of my responses was, it turns out nobody really wants each other's roads.
He wants to pay for them, there's nothing else.
Yeah, right. But when they have been transferred historically, it's usually been a request from a city. And it's generally been to establish design control of the route. And convert the route to a different cross section, usually. A non-motorized forward cross section. And of course, this all predates.
Got it.
Complete streets. So now that you have complete streets, the sometimes the development of the route of the system is more in alignment. Between locals and the state, but typically they have been requests to transfer. You know, parts of the system to cities. And there, while there have been, I think, a net of ten miles, there also have been about. Well, two and a half times as many requests as have actually gotten to the legislature. There have been some that did not get recommended. There have been some that the legislature. Considered a recommendation to transfer and declined it. There's been one where. The legislature received a recommendation not to transfer and transferred it anyway. I think overall, besides the fact that they tend to be city street requests coming from cities. That they are mostly dissimilar after that, the the reasons and the evaluation. Just really they're different in a lot of cases.
I would just add to what Steve explained, just that the report will. Has an inventory of all of the past transfers and will include that in the final report and appendix likely or. In the content and. So that'll be a record and we hope that going forward, all of these actions. Any sort of route transfer would be centralized and 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 reported. So that would be public information clearly accessible. We had to pull this together a bit.
And then a quick question is, has the draft report been published?
Not yet.
Okay, I didn't think. And a couple of other housekeeping things, the we've had a couple of different questions and I had some direct messages as well. Yes, we are recording this session and we will be uploading it and then we'll send out a link to that upload. Probably early next week as soon as we we get it up on the website. And last bit of housekeeping is thank you to the complete complete streets implementation team at Wash Dot. We say hello to you as well. So I don't see any other hand raised. Jacob, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to lower Jacob's hand. I assume Jacob, did you have a second question?
I did not. Thank you. I'll lower my hand and the answers are great. Thanks.
I don't see anything else at this time. Does anyone else have any any other questions they'd like to toss in or comments?
I have kind of a crazy question from Clough County. Has the state ever processed a transfer for a regional trail? Off the cuff, keep things exciting.
I wouldn't use this process unless they're defined as a state route, so. It's really the the state routes in in statute are. Roadways pretty much, state trails are. Off that system. So it wouldn't use this process, but.
Just curious if it ever happened before.
We may have answers and the people who have the hand up.
There's folks raising your hand. If someone has a a response to that question, if they could go ahead and unmute themselves and respond, otherwise we'll get to the other hand raising as additional questions next.
Right, Gabe Phillips with Wash Dot. Joe, Rob is right that. I suppose a trail could transfer ownership between the state and a local agency, but it wouldn't go through this process because those state routes aren't defined in state law. This process is just to establish changes to the route descriptions in state law. So since our trails aren't described. So since our trails aren't described that way, we can still transfer right of way and property outside of this process. So that may be a possibility. I'd have to defer to our real estate folks. Um, but I will, I don't want to say that this process is limiting that option.
And thank you very much, Gabe. Commissioner Sannick has his hand, has your hand raised?
Yeah, uh, just briefly. I'd made the comment on there about financial capacity of a county to take on a route. And I think I understood you to say that's not considered currently in whether or not a route should be shifted from one jurisdiction to another. Like a simple comment I'd make is there's some counties in this state that would not have the financial capacity to take on any kind of a state route and be able to maintain it. So it was. Operable and in good condition. So I think that might be a criteria for you guys to review as you go forward with this.
I think, I, I, I guess I would say, I think. Some of the criteria that establishes that there should be state route connections to all, a, a lot of. To population centers around the state are, are really aimed at uh ensuring that. Um. Right, so that's what, that's one of the criteria. And then one of the reasons that we suggested that, that um. Policy criteria, if it's the sole, if it's the sole connection, state route connection. That the local preference ought to, ought to take, you know, precedence. Um, was recognizing that fact. Um. But that, I think that's, that's the reason that we have the state route system defined the way it is. Um. But I hear, I hear you. That, that, that's, it's got to be a consideration in the discussion. It's just that it's not part of the. Criteria about whether or not it makes sense as a state route, but it is reflected in those criteria.
I would just add to Rob's comments there that yes, it definitely has been considered throughout this discussion that we've been having over the course of the year. Uh, and it's addressed in the process portion of that as opposed to that mapping criteria, which is kind of a simple look. Um.
There's a couple of roads in our county that prior to my becoming a commissioner in twenty thirteen were. Had been uh county roads and then became state routes, the one two seventy two and one ninety four. And. Honestly, with the traffic on them, they really, in my opinion, would need to stay state routes just as examples, but. I could see where if the state got in a real tight spot, they might say, well, we're going to get rid of this segment or that segment and all of a sudden you have a. Pretty good size obligation added to your county operations that may not really have the funding to support it. So that's my only comment. I appreciate all the work you've done.
That, that's exactly why we had the recommendation that the local preference should take. You know, should take priority uh in those decisions.
Thank you.
So it looks like we have two other questions. So I'm gonna make sure we have time for both of those. The first one is, will the final report contain any recommendations for transfer?
And the answer is no.
I thought I would let you say that, Rob. And then. The last question is, is there an appeal process?
Maybe we should talk a little bit more about that, though.
Yeah, please do, Steve.
First of all, we found that most of the existing system makes the connections and has the continuity. That it's supposed to have, right? The places that are connected, the places that should be connected are connected. Um, so we found a very, very small percentage of the system would even be considered for transfer from the state to anyone else. And really no um urgency or, or need to propose that. Um, in addition, the scope of this study did not really um provide sufficient um uh range. For us to take individual requests and evaluate them. Um, that's a big job. Um, and. With the system showing very little need for that, um, it's not a job that, you know, probably produces a lot of value to anybody. Um, and then finally, we had a very clear um input from stakeholders, but there's not a desire for that to occur either. Uh, there are some um route transfers on the horizon that will be considered under this. Uh, methodology, if this methodology is finally adopted and the commission uh lifts the, the current moratorium. Um, but uh they are all transfers that are sort of driven by other uh factors that, you know. Some may be previously proposed and then subject to the freeze and then. Some that are um, that will be considered because of construction of the state highway system, things like that. But very little need found and very little interest found in any kind of wholesale uh statewide transfer process. And even if it did occur, it would be a project bigger than the one we've just done.
Yeah, let me just pile one more comment onto that one. Uh. Is that most of the transfers that occur are segments of routes, small segments of routes. And we did not have the analysis scope to get down to that level of dividing every route into segments to look at the possible candidates for. Transfers. Um, so. We're not, that's our, one of the reasons we're not making any specific recommendations.
You're muted, Nicole.
Sorry. The last question we have at this point that I, and I think might have a little bit of a longer answer is, is there an appeal process?
The entire process is an appeal process.
The entire process. And, and then after the entire process, the, the final appeal process, I think, is to the legislature because.
Exactly.
Just to make a choice.
As I've mentioned, the um past transfers, when they have been um non-concurrents transfers. Um, the, the commission is essentially deciding the case in the face of an appeal. Um, and even if it does get to the legislature, those that have been disputed, and there have been a few. They are in fact appeals uh to directly to the legislature. So there's no like adjudication, there's no. Um, uh, you know, quasi judicial process for it at all, but that's part of the. You know, this, this entire process, when the, when a transfer is not agreed to is essentially a dispute resolution process. And it, sometimes that dispute resolution is in the purview of the legislature. And sometimes it gets resolved sooner and sometimes the transfer just never goes anywhere.
Just adding that we have changed up the pro, or we're proposing, you know, initially to look at. Possibly a negotiation element of the process that hasn't been there. And I think that may also be helpful in. Avoiding conflict.
Since most of the conflicts are about things that are not in the criteria. That's right.
So we are right at noon. So is Paula, do you have any closing statements you'd like to make?
There is a question.
Oh, there's a question coming in.
Yes, there's guidance on the, on the application of the policy factors, yes.
Oh yeah, grab that one.
Okay.
You see it? Will the evaluation reports include a discussion of the policy items you identified in addition to the H L M matrix?
High, low, medium, yeah.
And Rob answered, yes.
I don't know.
So I guess in closing, you know, just really appreciate your time, cutting out your time today for this discussion and all of the really good questions. And it certainly does guide us in producing that final report and what we need to emphasize uh there. And if you have other questions or comments that come up after this meeting closes, feel free to please email me at the commission. Um, you, you can find my email address. Online or just give me a call if you like. I'd be happy to talk with you. Uh, and uh, thanks again. And thank you to the commissioners who've guided this process throughout. As well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye bye.